Sorry, I get fussed at my Janice, don't have my mic on. Okay, good evening everyone, we are here tonight for our work session on Monday, August 9th. Ray is in Savannah, he went down there for the conference, he'll be back tomorrow. So, without further ado, we'll get started. So Lisa?
Sorry y'all, we have one case to hear tonight, I asked him to come up, he'll present please.
Vice Mayor and Council, the first item we have on the agenda is R 21-005. The applicant is Wayne Knogel. The property owner is Pat McDonald. The map and parcel number is LG100049. The present zoning is O&amp;I. The requested zoning is CH. Property address is 827 Leeburg Road. It's approximately five acres and the proposed zoning would be for office and storage. And I think the applicant is here, if y'all have any questions.
Yeah, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to take the podium?
Hey, good evening. So I'm Wayne, I'm the one applying for the application. So we have, I have a roof and business here in Loganville. And right now, we have an office over behind Sonic and then we store our trailers over at East Side Towin', over there off of Tuck Road in Georgia 20. I have one full-time person that works in the office and then I have four or five salesmen that come to the office probably once a week just to turn in paperwork or pick checks up or whatever. And so what we had, what we were trying to do with this property was, is to put a fence up on the property line next to the residential side. Put some gravel in the backyard where we actually can park some trailers back there. And just to be clear, our trailers are, all of our trucks are like one-ton trucks, they're not big dump trucks or anything, they're one-ton trucks, they're pickup trucks. And the trailers that we pull are like the little 14-foot dump trailers that you put shingles in when you, when you put the shingles off a house, throw them in there and take them to the landfill. We're not dumping anything on the property, we're not using it like a transfer yard, we're simply putting trailers there. At night, we would bring the trailers back, leave them at the yard and then they would go out the next morning. Most, I got about six trailers right now. One or two of them always stay at the houses of my guys that work for me. But there are times that we need to store trailers and just keep them in the yard. When it says "storage," the only thing we're really asking for is sometimes we may have some shingles left over or something, we may stack in the backyard or in the basement down there of this house. This house is, I think it's like 1,500 square feet, it does have a basement. And I would have one, possibly two people working in there and that's it.
What did you just say, you'd have one or two people?
I have one person in the office full-time, have a part-time person that comes in every now and then, but it's not like there's 10 people in the office or anything.
So the activity would be in the morning when they pick up their trucks, in the evening they come back?
That's correct.
And everything's parked behind the fence where you can't see it?
Yes, and so in the zoning, if you look at that picture right there y'all just pulled up, so the city has a fence that goes all the way down to the road. And what we had proposed was, is to put all the, all the, all the storage and the fencing behind the house. So you couldn't see much from the road, from Leeburg Road right there.
Does anyone have any other questions? Counselor? Vice Mayor? Any other questions? Alright, does anyone want to speak in opposition? Can you come take the podium please?
Y'all, my name is Brad Johnson and I'm representing my mama, Rita Johnson. She lives at 847 Leeburg Road and we are opposed to this zoning. It's primarily a residential area right there. The, the house is there now is for office use. And there had, never has been a problem with it being an office use right there. But the storage use, y'all, the way the property goes down right there. I don't care how big a fence you put up right there, my mama will still be able to see the storage in the backyard right there. Okay? And then furthermore, when this goes commercial highway, y'all, anything and everything can come in there, as y'all well know. Okay? Into a residential area. The, it's residential across the road, 1, 2, 3 houses right across the road, there's a resi, everything back up to 81 is residential right there. The, the people that live there now are residential, they enjoy what they got right there and they do not want commercial highway on Leeburg Road there. And I hope that each one of y'all got my letter that I sent by email. And I hope you read it. So anyway, it's just, it's just not the time and the place for commercial highway to be on Leeburg Road right now. And I hope y'all vote accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else? Can you take the podium please?
My name is Harry D. Taylor Jr. I live next to his mama and I love my property and the people that live next to me love their property. And I know Ms. Johnson loves hers. I want to keep it the way that it is. Can we keep it that way?
It's under consideration for sure.
Please.
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't buy that to give it up to commercial. And I'm sorry for the people that want to. And I understand that the land is very valuable. But Ms. Johnson and Deborah that lives next door to me, me and my wife and my family, we want to leave it the way that it is. If we can.
Okay, thank you. You have questions Annie?
I was just going to ask, how many people are here tonight that are against this proposal?
That's all Lisa.
And Tim, I was just curious, how did it get zoned over to O&amp;I in such a residential area?
Oh, that was probably rezoned 10 or 15 years ago to O&amp;I, which is just an office use. And the only other non-residential use on that road all the way up to 78 is the mini warehouses and that was rezoned probably back in the 80s or 90s. I know it's been there over 20 years.
Okay, well there's no other questions, I guess we'll take a vote on Thursday night.
Okay. Alright, now we'll move on to Ann Hunsinger.
Thank you madam vice mayor, I have a couple of things on my agenda. The first one, and it's in your packet, is the engagement letter. With Clifton, Lipford, Hardison and Parker, there are auditors. This is a budgeted item. So this is an engagement letter request for signature for the audit for the fiscal year ending June 2021.
I can't hear. It's not you, I think it's that fan over there.
Hello. I couldn't hear so good.
Yes, that's better. Sorry.
Want me to start over? Let me start over, okay. So I have a couple of things on my agenda, the first thing is, the 2021 engagement letter with Clifton, Lipford, Hardison and Parker. You just wanted to hear me say that twice. There are auditors and have been for a number of years. This is a budgeted item, so this is just a request to allow Danny to, Danny and the mayor to sign this engagement letter for our auditors. And I would put that on consent except we're not doing that tonight. Any questions on the, on the letter? Okay, moving along, budget amendments. Danny and Natalie, I'm going to let you take this one because I don't have the detail on what y'all are wanting to amend in the budget. I guess Danny's going to do it.
Greg told me I should make Natalie do it, I said, she's a woman, you can't make her do anything.
Oh wow.
You're going to get in trouble.
You're going to get in trouble.
No, my wife's not here. So, even vice mayor and council, a few things, yes, the budget amendment is the direct correlation to the American Rescue Plan that we received the money last month. It is for $2,404,930. I sent you all an email after it was sent to the agenda showing you the funds have been deposited into the account. This was done after the budget was approved by y'all, so we will need to amend the budget to reflect that. Any questions?
So all we're doing is adding the line item for the, for the grant, or for the program into the budget?
Adding the funds to the overall budget. It's going to change the number.
Okay, we'll talk about it again on Thursday. The next three items that I've-
With that, I would like to use that money, part of that money for a retention slash sign-on bonus for employees. We all know there's issue with hiring employees, but more so with the police. Seeing a little bit in the fire department, which is hard to believe, but we are. And we really see it in the utilities department, that's your water, sewer, stormwater and water quality. Brandon's had openings for, I think, two months now?
Since the beginning of the year.
Since the beginning of the year, thank you Kristy. Still haven't found them. We've had the police open for four months and we just opened the fire for another position. So, we know, we're being told that other cities and counties are going to start doing sign-on bonuses. So, we want, would like to do a sign-on bonus. Also, we would like to do a retention bonus for the employees that are here before they jump ship to go somewhere else. So, we want to control the bleeding before it starts. So with that, we would like to do that. I just need authority to suspend the money because it's not in the budget. If this was something I put in the budget, it would just be like a normal raise, I would just see accordingly within my power, but since it's not. I would like to use a portion of this money to fund that and that is with the guidance of the American Rescue Plan. It's called premium pay, as they refer to it as. Some, I know Rockdale County's done it and I believe some other cities are starting to do it, so we're going to see it. And we may lose some people because there are some people who may do a lot more than we can financially afford, but we need to do something to show the employees that we are thinking about them and we do thank them for staying here throughout COVID and especially through this time now, there's so many jobs opening. So any questions on that?
I do. What kind of money are we looking at here? Can you ballpark?
Overall?
Just, you know, police and fire?
Well, police and fire, we're looking at, so we had, I formed a committee last week to talk about this with HR, police chief, fire chief, water quality, had some people there, myself. And we went anywhere from $750 to where we're at now is about $2,000 for sign-on bonus. And if somebody's already here, it's going to be $2,500. If they have 10 years of more service, if they have 10 years or less, it's about $2,000. It's for, that's only for public safety and it'd be less for the, any other department. So, public safety has a little bit different job than most, as we all know. And especially the police, it's with the media, they, they take a beating. And it's, we see it now when we try to, we hire, we had, I think, how many people we applied, three? In the 90s, we used to get hundreds.
Hundreds, yeah. So. And Dick, you said five? In that, what, since January?
Any other questions?
Yeah, and we had talked about it, but what are we doing to maintain the employees here once they receive the bonus?
So, we're going to speak with Robin. I know with the sign-on bonus, we have a two-year RE in our policy, but we would like to put a 12-month commitment on that. I believe there's no legal reason why we can't. And if they did leave, they would, you know, have to, we either hold their check or whatever. But we have that already in place for new hires. If we send them to education or whatever, they have to stay here complete two years. Police department is different than any other department. State law says, you know, if they get someone, new hire, and they go somewhere else, that agency has to reimburse us, but that's-
Proposed, yeah.
I wish everybody was that way, but they're not. Robin, is there any issue with that, 12 months? Are y'all okay with 12 months? And it's 24 months for new hires.
Any questions from anybody? Any other questions? Did you need anything else other than that?
I'm just need a yes vote next Thursday.
Vote on Thursday. Okay. The next item I have, we have some vehicle purchases for public works and utilities. Two F-150s, four F-350s and an F-350 with a dump bed. And then three from the general fund, I'm sorry, on the F-150s, two from the water fund, four F-350s from the water fund. So they're coming out of different funds. We've got a, we're kind of having to strike while the iron's hot to get these vehicles because, as everybody knows, in the market right now, automobiles, parts, everything, it's scarce. So.
Yeah, these are, I'll tell the council, I'm going to have to come back and ask for money, these are total guesses, we're going off of 2021 numbers. Then the 2022's come out. I was on the phone with one of the state agencies, state contractors that hold a state contract for Ford. And he told me I had to get the order in this month or they're not going to take any more orders. And he doesn't know if they can even get them in by July of next year. So, as you know, when we order in this fiscal year and we take delivery in another fiscal year, it throws that budget out of line. Because we have to book it when we actually take the vehicle. So, in the past, we've always bought these vehicles in February to get them in usually by May. Now, we're not, the ones we bought back in February, we still have not took, took from because they're just not making them. It's, it's getting worse. They couldn't even give me a timeline when we would have them if we ordered them this month. And Ross did the best he could with the numbers, so that's why I put a 10% contingency. Of course, we're going to pay where the state contract is. But these are to replace several fleet vehicles throughout both departments. These are all budgeted as well.
Any questions from anybody on this?
I guess if they're not available in state contract, but we can't get them off contract, we could look at that?
We, we did discuss that with them, buy on lot, but we would be paying a good bit more money, anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 more. And we're also looking at, on the three, F-350s, not to get too technical, but their director is looking at buying the new Ford gasoline engine. It's, it's a lot easier to maintain, we don't have to sub out that work. They're a new engine that produces all the same torque as the diesels do, but he wants to give these a go to see if it's, you know, better than the diesels. Because right now, if the diesel goes down, we, we don't have a diesel mechanic, we have to send it to Aikens or somewhere like that. But with this, he is confident he can work on these gasoline engines like he does all the police cars and everything else.
That's good.
That's a little side note.
And I don't know how much regular market, because 250s are going for $5,000 over invoice right now. So, if you can find them, so. Danny, did you need anything else on that?
I'm sorry?
Did you need anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay. I have one other item that I want to bring up and we can talk about it tonight or we can talk about it in my updates and reports. I got a voicemail from Skip Alyles about the LVA idea that they have for the four acres and he wanted to know if we wanted to hear a presentation from him on that. Oh, is he, is he here? Hi Skip, I didn't see you come in. So I wanted to talk about, I know that there was some discussion after retreat, after the retreat didn't happen to wait until January. So, I wanted to bring this up and kind of throw it out there and find out what everybody thought.
I don't think it hurts to-
I mean, we were going to hear it anyways at the retreat.
True.
I don't think it hurts to hear it now.
Okay, would you guys, Skip, could you do that on Thursday? Okay. I'm sorry, okay. 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 Do we add that just to the agenda for Thursday? Kristy, can you do that? Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to Jay Bowlin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to call up Chief McHugh for a couple items we have tonight. First is the replacement patrol rifles. We're going to use the federal forfeiture funds, the amount of $19,298. Chief, would you mind giving us a little background on it?
I'm sorry, I couldn't-
Would you go ahead and kind of give us a little background on it?
Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council, we, our patrol rifles, which I, I would love to tell you we don't even need them, but in today's time, unfortunately, we do. But the ones we have, have entered toward the end of their service life, about 10 years is what you get on a police weapon. Because believe it or not, we shoot regularly and qualify a couple of times a year. So, over the course of time, over 10 years or so, and some of those are a good bit over, over 10 years. They're just, the manufacturer actually suggests replacing those. So what we have done is talked with Cloud Armory over in Athens, who've given us a price to replace all of those with the trade-in of the rifles that we've got for a dollar figure of $19,298. And that includes the trade. And that, of course, will come out of forfeited funds, so courtesy of our local drug dealers.
Alright, do we, anybody have any questions on the council?
How many rifles?
25.
And do we, do we consider buying those locally?
I'm sorry, I beg-
Do we consider buying those locally versus going to Athens?
I couldn't hear.
Man, I'm buying them locally.
Oh yeah, 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 I couldn't hear.
So, when we buy from a law enforcement distributor, it's the same as like the state, there's no state contract for this, but you get the same cost, just to give you an example, if you-
We can buy it cheaper than John can.
He, he can't even buy them. For the, the average price of $1,038 that you're there, that rifle re- that rifle retail is $1,700. And that's what we would have to pay locally, so it's-
I apologize, I got CHS, can't hear squat.
Does anybody else have any other questions for Chief? All right, I'd like to put that on, or I guess we'll vote on that Thursday night. Next up is the SRO contract. You wanna hit the high notes on that, Chief?
Yes, that's just the standard yearly contract, and our reimbursement on that's $55,000. We're hoping, and we're anticipating that'll go up next year, but for this year, it is still the 55,000.
And, and that's still Peterson, correct?
Yes.
He's doing a great job over there. All right. Thank you, Chief. Anybody have any questions on the SRO contract?
Nope.
All right, thank you, Chief. Next up, I'd like to call down Fire Chief Tim Johnson. He's gonna discuss some bunker gear purchases in the amount of $15,120. Chief, how are you doing tonight?
Good.
Good buddy.
Good to see you, Vice Mayor and Council. This is, last year, I came to y'all for some turnout gear. The shelf life on our turnout gear is like everything else, it's got a 10-year expiration. I've got about 43 employees, counting part-timers, that wear this gear. So, in order for it not to be such a burden on the city all at one time, we've developed a program to buy five sets a year. So, this is five sets to replace current gear that's expiring, and also a couple sets for a couple new guys.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Nope. Okay. I guess we'll vote on that Thursday night. Chief Johnson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Bill DeBalle is not here, he's in Savannah. So, Danny, do you wanna talk about any of this, or?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll let Brandon talk about this, the first one, and the second one, and the third one.
All right. Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. I guess the equipment, are we gonna discuss the equipment? Okay. The track loader, the one we have now is an '08 model. There are some minor issues with that one that I believe we can get fixed. I think I have that noted on there. I know the track, there's an issue with the tracks, we got some O-rings and stuff leaking on that, on the one side, on the final drive, that needs to be replaced. We don't know the extent of the repairs at this time, we haven't said it all, but I believe we can get that one repaired, and it'd be a good backup unit for us, because we do have five departments that are using this equipment, so. And that's why we're requesting this new track loader for us to start using in departments as well. And as far as the backhoe, it's, it's the same way, we, there is some issues with this one. We did take one out of the commission, it was a case, a 1989, I believe, case, backhoe that is now behind the fence up there for the next auction. It has far exceeded its lifespan, has lost power in the hydraulics in the engine, and we'd like to get this new unit to replace that one, and the one we have now currently that we're using also has some issues. It has some compression issues, we have to use starter fuel, fluid in the wintertime to get it to start, and, and the hydraulic system has some metal shavings inside, inside that fluid as well, so. That's why we're asking for these two 2021 units to put into our fleet.
So, these are budget items. This is one of the things we did during the budget this year, is come up with some equipment, like we did the trucks, so both these are in dire need of a replacement. The track loader is a Skid steer loader, $76,000, will come out of the general fund for highways and streets, and the backhoe will come out of the enterprise fund, I believe, water fund, for $125,000. So, we, you know, we try to keep at least two pieces of equipment, and we need them for the winter comes, and we start having leaks. Any questions?
Thank you. All right, the SCADA contract, this is a yearly annual contract that we use on our telemetry system. We have to have this in order to send us alarms or any issues on our water and sewer system. Y'all have any questions on that? No? Okay, then the last thing, just our drinking water lab contract, that's with EPD. Whenever they request sampling, we just send them a sample of our water, and they test it for chemicals, lead and copper, whatever it is that they're requesting at that time. And once we pay this, it's pretty much a yearly contract with them, and they do all our testing and stuff, so, with our water system.
About having questions? And I guess that's it? Or you might as well just stay there, Danny. Okay, Public Works, me, and we're gonna have Danny talk, because he needs, got all the information for about the dump day, and also, I think we're gonna have a presentation on Thursday night about the, of that disposal. So, Danny?
So, Steve Edwards apologized for not being here, he is our representative for now waste management, but his parents were sick, he had to go to Florida, so. Rick Jarvis from Latham, I'm being told from the mayor, will be here Thursday to give a presentation. They're gonna talk about the same thing we just talked about, finding people to work. I know we get a lot of phone calls about the garbage daily basis, didn't pick it up on time, didn't come today, left my can there, it's just, they're having an extremely difficult time finding people to work. So, I think Rick was gonna come and give an update on that, where they stand. Any questions on advanced disposal slash waste management? Okay. So, the next one is, a few months ago, if you remember, Councilman Renewer asked about dump day, I told her I'd get a date, so that date will be September the 25th at the wastewater treatment facility off of Highway 81, I believe the address is 4891, I believe. We will take residential garbage, we will not take paint cans nor tires, however, Lisa asked about looking at doing that, so I called today and got some updates from Lana Paint Disposal Company, so we're looking at doing this in the spring dump day, I believe it's in April, that you will be able to bring paint cans. I just need the council's permission, either we can set X amount in dollars aside, because they do charge for this, it's $5 per gallon, $25 for five gallons, and $2 for a pint, and they would, we could tell citizens that we have a $2,000 limit, once we reach that, we don't accept no more paint. We call this company, they come out and pick it up and dispose of it. So, anytime there's paint in a regular dumpster, we get fined for that, that's why we don't take paint cans. Same thing on the tire disposal. Instead of Georgia, EPD has a, what's called a STAR program, where it's a program that local governments can ask for reimbursements for taking tires. We have to advertise it, we have to submit an application 90 days prior to the event, state would approve it, we have to use a local, I mean, I'm sorry, a authorized hauler and authorized site for the tires. It's EPD's way of trying to clean up the stream buffers, so that's something we're gonna look at in April as well, because the 90 days were too close for the September date, so that will be reimbursed, hauling fees and the tire fee up to $4 per tire. So, we're looking at doing that, but I will need your approval, especially for the paint, if we wanna set aside some money. We don't wanna vote on it Thursday night, but be thinking about it for maybe sometime this year, so we can know before April gets here what you'd like to put aside to fund that program. We do have a lot of people bring paint cans and tires, and this is not for commercial companies, this is residential, citizens that live inside the city limits, you do have to show your ID and your address. I think, Brandon, how many tons did we do last dump day? I know there was nine dumpsters, I wanna say it was like 97 tons of trash that we hauled away, so. Any questions on dump day? Okay, bring your trash, September 25th.
And Danny, I forgot to mention that AC we need to talk about.
I got, that's next.
Okay.
Any questions about dump day? And as you can all see, I turned the air conditioner off so I, I could get approval on this, so the air, AC went out this morning. The service, the disconnect for the electrical melted to the unit on top of the roof. This room takes three air handlers, they're 10 tons each. We did get a quote from our, one of our vendors, Trust Heating and Air, and that was for a little over $9,000 per unit. I think I left it on my desk. Is it, is that there? What's that?
$9,700 a unit.
$9,700 each, so the option is to replace all three, let it work, or what I asked Randall to look into is if we could just replace one and change the piping from the cafeteria, which is on the other side of that wall, which we don't use, to do this. They said we could, but it would be an additional $5,000 to re-pipe everything. So, he, being the AC guy, recommended two units and re-piping it, which is still about the same price as three. I'm of the opinion we should just try one unit, we only use it four times a month, at $9,700, and $5,000, re-pipe it, and take our chances with it lasting 10 years. But I don't get to make decisions like that, that's what y'all are for. So, even if we ordered it today, it's gonna be eight to 10 weeks before it's installed, because we had to get a crane and everything. These units are failing one by one. So, that's something to think about Thursday, but we will not have AC Thursday, so dress according to the public, y'all know what to wear.
Danny, how old are these units?
We, they were here when we got here. I'm sorry, he did tell me that, 2011, he did tell me that, it's in that email he sent me. So, yeah, they've lasted almost 10 years. He said they thought they got struck by lightning, but there's no way to tell that. Kyle, wasn't two units already not working? Yeah. We've been on one for how long? Since we moved, yeah. Yeah.
If it was an insurance, I mean, if it was a lightning strike, wouldn't insurance cover that?
Possibly, but I don't know how you'd prove it.
The melted, the melted copper.
Well, the other two didn't melt, just one, but we think, the legislature thinks that was because the compressors, I mean, the compressors locked up.
We got one back, if our deductible's not too-
I'm sorry?
We got one back, or one paid for.
Our deductible's $5,000, so we're, we're gonna make a claim for $4,000.
Trying over here. $4,700, it saves us five grand.
Yeah, but our insurance went up $27,000 this year. All right, Kristi? For claims.
Wow.
Did you say worth a squeeze, as OJ says? Thousand, three zeros. But I would recommend one and reduct it at $13,000 roughly. I can work, I can try Randall, get some more quotes, but right now, that was just, you know, him today working on it. And they replaced the other two already, they were the lowest last time, and they were our local vendor.
So, building. So, building.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Danny, you did a great job for me.
I think that's all I have, I have no, well, I guess, when you get down to city manager, I have nothing.
I'll have update on Jeremy, how much trash he picked up for about the July, on Thursday night, or the month of June, of July. Okay, I think that's all.
No.
I don't think, huh?
I get, I get to tell you, I don't have anything to report.
Oh, Danny, oh, Danny, oh, I'm sorry, Danny, go, Danny. Human resource, Danny.
I'm, I'm done now, turn off the mic.
Don't, turn, turn your mic back on, Danny, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Madam Vice Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Sorry, Danny. Okay, city manager report?
None.
Nothing, okay. Attorney report?
Same, nothing.
Nothing, okay. But before we adjourn, I just want to tell everyone that, remember Danny, he's going into surgery in the morning at 8 o'clock, he's gonna have surgery on his back, so if y'all will remember him in prayer in the morning. He's supposed to be outpatient, so he, hopefully, everything will go good, and he'll be in, and he'll be out, but how long you think he'll be out of work?
Um, long enough.
As long as you can, right?
Hopefully a week.
About a week, okay. But just remember him in prayer, y'all think about him in the morning. When you get up, you what?
You be city manager, done.
Okay, well, that being said, I'll ask for somebody to call for adjournment.
To make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, second?
Second by Lisa? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now is the time for community feedback.
No, we don't do that tonight.
Oh, we don't do that, that's tonight, sorry, well, we're done. Go home.